The Brazos County Commissioners Court, uh, excuse me, the Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on June 17th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners courtroom of the Brazos County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106 in Bryan, Texas. First item of business is invocation and pledge, and I will lead those. God, we come to you today with requests, requests that you watch over our lands and those that stand in the breach protecting us, and especially, Lord, with the loss of officers in this last week. Bless our officers, our first responders, our military, keep them safe. Bless and help all the people dealing with the floods in San Antonio and in central Texas. All those in the Middle East, God, please let them see peace, let there be peace here, even on our own soil. Let your healing grace and mercy come over all these things, we ask, in your holy, perfect, and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, and the second item on the agenda, item number two, is call for citizens' input and concerns and/or concerns, and we have six of those this morning. If we could please start with Kathy Vines.
Good morning, Commissioners. I guess the first thing I should say is I have prayers for Ann Boney, who had her knee operated on yesterday, for Steve Aldrich, who is in surgery today, and for the judge who is missing today. My prayers are with those three. The topic that I wanted to primarily focus on today is the presentation that was made a couple weeks ago by John Polster. His, I won't comment on the contents of his, of his presentation, but what I do want to make a comment about is the lack of questions that came from the court. You all have been sitting here for months, listening to hundreds of people, asking questions of you, which you did not answer at the podium, asking for items to be addressed, and when he asked you if you had any questions, as our elected officials, as our advocates, nobody said a word on our behalf, on the citizens' behalf, and I was dumbfounded. Nobody asked, maybe we don't have questions, but there's an audience of people who might. Open it up for people to ask. You didn't have any questions? You could have said, has there been a study done to show what the effect of widening the railroad track through Wellburn will make on the transport of commercial activity? Has that been calculated since that project has been made known? Has there been any study about the Highway 6 changes, the video that came out? Has anything been adjusted since that report was first developed on what that highway will do? Has, has there been any adjustment for the declining population rates in Tex, in the state of Texas? How many properties are going to be affected but not purchased by eminent domain, or taken by eminent domain, I should restate? They, I heard an engineer at the event, the Polster ITS event, at, was it Legends? And he said, well, we're only expecting, I can't remember whether he said, two homes to be taken, or four homes to be taken. What about the other hundreds of homes that are affected having a highway? How would you feel if you had a highway 40 feet from your back door with no compensation? And that, the weight of that hangs over these owners' properties for the next 20 years, or 10 years, or five years, however long it takes, their property values are severely diminished. I don't care what they say, nobody wants a highway out their door. Why could you not have asked any of those? There's a million questions that are unanswered and not a single, I don't understand how you can be an advocate for the citizens and not ask questions on their behalf. On a separate topic, I noticed last week or the week before, on payment of claims, there were expenses still being paid to Hart, a system that's going to be obsolete before the next general election, and I don't know why we are spending county funds on something that can't be used. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Kyle Greenwood.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Kyle Greenwood, Brazos County resident. Oxford defines misinformation as false or inaccurate information, especially when used with the intention to deceive. On May 6th, the judge spoke for about eight minutes regarding the inner east loop in violation of the Open Meetings Act, in my opinion, and didn't give us an opportunity to respond. In that, in that time, he introduced this mailer, which he claimed had been sent out twice to every voter in Brazos County, and inferred that it was sufficient education for us all to base our votes. So when I look at this, one of the first things that jumps out at me is, this is Highway 6. These pictures reflect Highway 6, but the expansion of Highway 6 is in no way involved with the money that is being spent from the trip bond. This is misinformation. When I read the paragraphs here about Proposition A, it says, "Proposition A will fund vital improvements to widen, resurface, and upgrade roads and bridges throughout the community." There's nothing in there that talks about building a new road. Further down, it says, "Prop A will allow the local investment in infrastructure projects to be leveraged for significant state funds to improve local roads." There's nothing in here about building new roads. This is misinformation. Here's another one that we were provided, and it shows the, the bond program list at the bottom. It's so small as to be illegible. Even with a magnifying glass, you could not read and see what's on here.
Kyle, look at us when you, when you speak, would you, so?
Forgive me, sir.
Thank you.
It's so small as to, you could not read this, even with a magnifying glass. It's illegible. This is not accurate information on which we, the voters, could base our vote. Also, on the map, it has this stray red line down here, I have no idea what it is, but it's not anything that we know that's on the bond program list. This is misinformation. How long will the court continue to deprive us of our right to due process? Commissioner Condala, I have heard it said that you lose sleep at night, concerned about your neighbors, and I appreciate that, but I ask you, do you really want your term on the court to be marred with this east loop the way it's being done? I freely agree that there may be a need for additional transportation facilities to accommodate growth, and that there may be some common ground on which both sides can meet, but to get there, we must start here, in the court and on the record. In the words of Professor Dumbledore, "There comes a time when we all must choose between what is easy and what is right." Please choose what is right and grant our request to place the inner east loop on the agenda for public discussion.
Kyle, can you get me copies of both of those, please? I've never seen those. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Hobbs.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Jeff Hobbs, and I live in Bryan. I like country music, but not the stuff they call country music today. I like the older stuff. Good country music died in 1996, I think. Uh, what killed it? A bunch of city boys singing about trucks, beers, and dirt roads. Some people would just say, I'm stuck in my ways, and I need to open my mind to a new kind of country, but I like what I like. I guess what I'm saying is, I like my country to be country, and I like my county to be county. I am opposed to the east loop. I am opposed to people losing their land and being told to open their minds to what will be needed by people in the future. I, for one, am against someone today losing their land for someone tomorrow. I do not feel like the county has a mandate to proceed with plans for an east loop after one unclear vote. Commissioner Brown is correct. This whole thing is exactly like Nancy Pelosi's, "We have to pass it to see what's in it." Honestly, I don't even remember if I voted for it or not. How do you think that vote would go today if we were to have it now, with people knowing what they know now? Do you still believe it is the will of the people? I went to the public meeting at Legends Event Center in May, and the biggest thing I learned was, who is for the east loop? Developers. Not all developers, but some. That ought to tell you something. I saw developers arguing with residents about why the east loop is needed. Forgive me for not believing they have everyone's best interest in their hearts. I heard one developer say, "This won't happen for about 30 years." In other words, you won't care because you'll be like 80 or dead. If this is being done in the name of economic development, please tell me how this will benefit the citizens of Brazos County and not just a few people. How often is something touted as economic development, and then taxes don't go down, or at least remain at the same rate? I am proud of being from Bryan, Texas. You couldn't get me to live in College Station for All the Gold in California, another great country song. And no offense to those of you who live in College Station, but I often tell my daughters when we're driving through College Station, there used to be nothing right there. There was a dump right there. There was a racetrack right there, and now it's all roads, houses, and apartments. Please don't, College Station, my Bryan. We keep hearing that we have to give TechDOT the best route, or they will just put the east loop wherever they want. Please remember that you represent us, not TechDOT. Perhaps TechDOT should focus on keeping people safe on Highway 6 between here and Hearn, and on Highway 105. TechDOT is not our overlord, and I guess I'm still confused, is this a TechDOT project or a county project? Let's not end up like the country songs, like Alan Jackson's Little Man and John Anderson's Look Away. Please represent us, put an end to the east loop. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Wiley.
Morning.
Morning.
A county is just a line on a map. The people who live inside the county are the lifeline of its culture and financial health. I think this body will guarantee more frustration and panic from the people, the longer this body withholds an invitation to have a conversation regarding inner east loop. Moving on to a different subject, President Trump signed Executive Order 14248 on March 25th. He addresses election processes that fail to provide free, fair, and honest elections in our constitutional republic. In particular, I will speak about Section 4, Improving the Election Assistance Commission. Currently, all electronic voting systems are certified using Voluntary Voting System Guidelines 1.0, which was created in 2005, 20 years ago. Volunteer Voting System Guidelines 2.0 was approved in February 10th, 2021, yet no system currently in use is certified under this guideline, period. The Election Assistance Commission stopped allowing certifications under the Guidelines 1.0 in the fall of 2023. The executive order directs the Election Assistance Commission to initiate amendments to the Guidelines 2.0 to protect election integrity. No barcodes or QR codes can be used on a ballot in which a vote is contained, except for those with disabilities. The deadline is September 21st of 20, of this year, for the Election Assistance Commission to take appropriate action to review, and if appropriate, recertify voting systems under the new standards of this section and rescind, rescind all previous certifications of voting equipment based on prior standards. Funding for state and local election offices or administrators, which is us, shall be subjected to compliance with the Guidelines 2.0 per FEMA and Homeland Security Grant Programs. I ask this body to not rubber stamp every expenditure that is requested regarding these electric, the electronic voting systems that potentially will be rendered not in compliance because the systems might be found in violation of Texas Election Code 122.0013, which fails to comply with the updated 2.0 EAC standards. The Texas Election Code, Chapter 65, sets forth hand marking of ballots and hand counting processes that Texas has approved. I hope this body seriously considers to initiate our county to begin an implementation program or plan for the possibility that our systems will not be used. I value following rules. Therefore, if I see cherry picking of what this body may knowingly or unknowingly uphold compliance to and adherence to regarding our Texas Constitution, Texas Election Code, and Open Meetings Act, I will find it difficult to trust this body's decisions overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bobby Rosier.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bobby Rosier. I'm here this morning with my wife, Mayor Ruth Wilcox Rosier. We live on Wilcox Lane, Brazos County. We came here this morning to protest the east loop. We feel it is an unnecessary project, and is not to ease traffic congestion, but for economical development, and to pad the pockets of those wanting to see subdivisions, apartment complexes, businesses, and industrial parks built. It will run through our neighborhoods and destroy our countryside, along with the way of life we are accustomed to. One of the routes in consideration will take our daughter's house, the big, beautiful oak trees in our yard, our barn, our water well, and most of all, our house. Our house that we built ourselves and have lived in for almost 50 years, on the land that has been in my wife's family for almost 150 years, land that she has lived on all her life. Our children were raised there and still live on the land. We also have a grand, a granddaughter and a great grandson and a niece living on the family land. It was our hope that this family property would be passed on to our heirs, but this seems to be in jeopardy. Not only does it take those things away, but it also divides your property almost in half, causing livestock unable to cross the east loop and graze from one side to the other. It will also put the stock tank on one side, leaving the other side with no water. We also will be offered only pennies, only dollar for its worth. We will probably have to consider an eminent domain lawyer to get anywhere near the market value. With our age of being in the 80s, it would be very difficult to start over. When we question our situation, the powers that be just say, "Well, that's what's needed." Well, I just wonder, if the east loop was taking their house, would they say, "That's okay, it's needed." Now, I don't know why, after saying this, that I have to fight for this, for this land. This is what Kyle was talking about a while ago. This is a blown-up vision, version, uh, probably like 200 times of the card that was supposedly sent to every county voter, registered county voter in this precinct twice. It's illegible, and you don't really know what you're voting for. We were misled, and for that reason, I think that this project should be stopped. There's no reason for it to go on and spend county money. So county commissioners, you and the judge can stop this project where it is and save the county money. There's, nobody is perfect. Everybody makes mistakes, and there's no, no reason that you can't, or, you know, say, "Hey, I made a mistake. Let's stop this project where it is. Let's save the county some money. Let's take another look at it." So with that being said, I think that you should stop this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosier. Next speaker is Jim Stewart.
Commissioners, good morning. I am Jim Stewart. I wanted to visit with you just for a couple of minutes this morning about COVID-19, something that I think we all thought was in our rearview mirror, but I'm really quite proud of what the county did and all the volunteers and all the organizations here in Brazos Valley did back in 2020 and 2021. You know, there's a lot of things probably done incorrectly with COVID-19. You know, there's a lot of things probably done incorrectly with COVID nineteen. Some people argue with the masking, people argue about the shields that were put up and so on, but I think we would all agree that the immunizations, that the vaccines were an appropriate response, particularly for my peer group, the older folks. So on January fifth of twenty twenty one on a Zoom call, a decision was made that we need to have a cohesive, organized approach to administering the COVID nineteen vaccines. There was initial supply of a couple of hundred that was delivered to the Brookshires Pharmacy in downtown Bryan. And there was one guy on the Zoom call that went on a tirade about how that's, that's dumb and we need a more formal process. Well, I plead guilty. That was me. The judge is sending me text messages saying, hey, Jim, would you head this up? And I send him a thumbs up. I walked out of my little QB after that meeting and I said, Vicki, I'm not sure what I've done, but I'm now in charge of the vaccine effort for Brazos County. So it was a pretty exciting day for me. So that was January fifth. January sixth, we had our very first meeting with Texas A and M, Brazos County, the two cities, St. Joseph Hospital, American Red Cross, United Way, a whole, Teaks, a whole list of people that stepped up to participate and support this effort. January eighteenth, we had a walkthrough and then later, a week later, they actually started administering the vaccines. We administered three hundred doses on that first day. This went on for almost five months. And by the end of it in June, which is why I'm here this morning, four years ago this month, the hub had administered a hundred two thousand vaccinations, a hundred and two thousand vaccinations. By that point, the pharmacies and the medical clinics had started to get the vaccines and they were able to administer the doses to their patients and their customers. So there's really no longer need for the hub to be performing. But I'm just really proud for what our community did, what the Commissioners Court did, what Judge Peters did, the mayor's did, Texas A and M University, all those folks stepped up and pulled this off. So for that, I thank you for my time. I'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Item number three is Presentations and/or Discussions. Presentation of the two thousand twenty five Chamber Day results, uh, Chamber Day survey results by Glenn Brewer, the president and CEO of the Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce.
Well, howdy.
Howdy.
Howdy. Uh, greetings from the Bryan College Station Chamber to our county commissioners and also to the best county staff in the state of Texas. I'm assured that that is correct.
Yes.
Uh, a quick aside, uh, I'm of the opinion that the only real music produced was in the nineteen seventies, but that's not why I'm here today. Uh, I'm here today to present the business results of our survey. It was March twenty seventh to remind everybody, so it's almost three months ago that we had Chamber Day and we went out to visit our businesses. Our two thousand twenty five recap, I fully take a responsibility for not ordering Chamber of Commerce weather for this Chamber Day. It was a light rainy day all year long. It didn't dampen anyone's spirits, but it does, uh, does tend to cut down on our volunteers. And while our numbers have gone up for several years in a row, our numbers were slightly down this year. We visited more than a thousand businesses previously and we were down to nine hundred and seventy nine this year with, with a few less volunteers. But nonetheless, almost nine hundred and eighty businesses visited and data collected from six hundred and seventy nine businesses that go into this, uh, this survey. Would remind everyone that when we go out there and we canvass our businesses, you can walk into these, this business, and if you haven't been a volunteer for Chamber Day, I encourage everyone to do so. We get nothing but good compliments from the people that do it and they generally tend to come back every year. You may be walking into a business and you're going to talk to an A and M student behind the counter. It's their first day on the job. They don't even know where the supplies are located. And then the next business you walk into could be a mom and pop that had been there for fifty years. And so what ends up happening when you aggregate those six hundred, six hundred and seventy nine answers together, you will get a pretty good idea of what the business community is feeling and what people's thoughts are. Individually, they may vary, but it's a good collective result. And that's what I'm going to highlight, uh, some of the highlights today. Lot of data is in here. Uh, you can, uh, I would encourage you to look through it later. We can get back and talk to any individual numbers later, but I'll just hit some highlights. First of all, the commissioners have their
I'm sorry.
surveys. Hundred and fifty volunteers, as I say, sixty teams in the morning and afternoon, nine hundred and seventy nine businesses visited, data collected from six hundred and eighty businesses. The first question we asked is the only question, uh, looking back. This is done in March, so you're talking about, you're asking the first question on twenty twenty four sales, asking these, uh, six hundred and eighty respondents, how did sales compare in twenty twenty four to your previous year? And the numbers were good. Fifty-two percent said sales have increased. We had twenty-five percent say sales stayed the same and only eighteen percent say sales decreased. So if you look on the next page with the detailed numbers, you can kind of see how that trend works. And I would say usually in the past, the trend is always usually going up. You can tell the difference from year to year or going down. This year, uh, mostly the numbers we're going to get are remarkably consistent to twenty twenty four's Chamber Day results. So while we had fifty-two percent say sales had increased and eighteen percent decreased, last year when we did Chamber Day, forty-nine percent said increase and eighteen percent decreased. So the numbers were a little bit better, uh, looking in back. Uh, I won't talk a lot on twenty twenty three numbers. You have that data, but you can see twenty twenty three was a very good year, still coming out of COVID. So our numbers for the last two years were down a little bit than twenty twenty three, but they were still up from last year. Going down, you can go down to the different industries and see what they differ, uh, industries, how they responded. The only thing, one of the big things that jumped out on that, health care and wellness, which includes fitness centers. They went, they were definitely down from last year where nine percent had a decrease in twenty twenty four. Twenty percent of those, uh, that industry reported a decrease in twenty twenty five. So those numbers were down, but generally the numbers were up. Continuing on, we start looking into the future. That was in the past. We're asking these six hundred and eighty businesses, what do you think our local economy is going to do as we go forward in twenty twenty five? And remarkably, this is with all the uncertainty and volatility that our businesses have been dealing with. Sixty-two percent of the businesses that we responded thought that the local economy was going to increase in twenty twenty five. Only thirteen percent thought it would be a decrease and nineteen percent thought it would stay the same. The next page breaks that down and you can see that that is remarkably close to last, the previous year's. Sixty-three percent increase this year, thirteen percent decrease. In the previous year, we had sixty-three percent increase and nine percent decrease. So up four percent on the decrease, but the numbers are remarkably the same. When you go down into the detail that's listed there, a couple of things jump out. Manufacturing, which we visited seventeen centers, eighty-eight percent thought the, uh, that their business was going to increase in the local economy, which is a pretty high number. Once again, health care and wellness, uh, excuse me, um, uh, hu- human ser- human ser- and social services had a big decrease of where they were sixty-seven percent the previous year. They were down to thirty-three percent, thinking business was going to be better, the local economy would be better. I'm sure that that's a reflection of federal funding expectations, uh, in that industry. Continuing on, then we want to know about our employees because we want to know about where our jobs are. When we asked them, what do you expect the number of employees to do over the coming year? Forty percent said they expect to increase, uh, their employees in the coming year, twenty twenty five. Fifty-four percent stayed the same and only four percent, four point four percent, I round up all the numbers that I'm saying out loud, expected a decrease in their employees. That's pretty good numbers, but that reflects on the optimism they had for twenty twenty five. When you look at last year, it's, it's, it's actually remarkably the same. Numbers from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five surveys, get down to the individual industries. Once again, health care and wellness was down from forty-four percent expecting an increase down to thirty-seven percent. That reflects their view on the upcoming economy. Once again, manufacturing was up all the way to seventy-six percent expecting an increase in manufacturing jobs. So that also reflects their outlook on the economy. Continuing on, uh, one of the questions we ask and, and, uh, this could be a little confusing. How do you rate the quality of qualified applicants in our area for your type of business? So that's not the applications they're getting. We're asking, in our area, how do you rate the, the quality of qualified applicants? They may have a business that there are no qualified applicants. It may be such a specialized business that you can't get a local person to get it. But once again, you aggregate all these numbers together and you'll get a pretty good answer. And the answer here was forty-six percent thought the, the local, uh, qualified applicants were good. Thirty-three percent average and twelve percent thought their applications for local people were poor. Once again, you can delve into the detailed numbers behind that, uh, similar to twenty twenty four. Down a little bit, actually it's up a little bit from twenty twenty three. So that, uh, that is good, possibly reflecting on the increase in our population and, and the number of applicants applying for these jobs, but that's remarkably similar to last year. Then we go on to one of my favorite questions, the quality of life. We ask our businesses, uh, outside of business, how would you rate the quality of life in the Brazos Valley for you and your staff? Forty-four point five percent said excellent. Twenty, forty point four percent said good, twelve percent average and one point eight percent poor. I'd like to talk to the one point eight percent. I don't know how, uh, they come up with a poor quality of life, but that is the answer of the survey. Uh, if you look at that, excellent and good is eighty-five percent. So eighty-five percent of the people we surveyed think the quality of life here is above average. And I would agree with them. And then, of course, you can see the detailed breakdown on the next page. Continuing on, we talked about first responders. Our chamber recognizes that our businesses could not function without quality first responders. We're actually having our softball classic fire versus the police tomorrow, where we recognize the contribution of our first responders. And when we surveyed our, our businesses, uh, asking them, compared to the previous twelve months, how do you rate your safety and security in your business neighborhood? Fifty-one percent said they felt very safe and forty-four point eight percent said they felt relatively safe, with only two point eight percent saying not safe. So that's ninety-five point nine, ninety-six percent feeling relatively or very safe in their business neighborhood. Next page, we ask historically, historically underutilized businesses, hub businesses, are you a hub business or hub qualif- uh, qualifiable? We had sixteen percent say yes, they were hub businesses. Forty-seven percent said no, and here's some work the chamber needs to do. Thirty-seven percent said they did not know. So we need to make sure that people understand what the historically underutilized businesses are and what is available to them. And that's a word that we can get out and try to do a better job of that. But we did have sixteen percent, uh, respond that they were hub certifiable. And then probably of, of great interest to you on our, our last page, we ask all those businesses to list what their businesses' concerns are. What are your business biggest concerns? And they can check more than one answer. And it's, it's pretty remarkable when you look at it, you can see that in spite of the optimism for the current year, I mentioned all the uncertainty, the general economy is by far times six percent, uh, six times any other answer, the biggest concern that businesses have for the coming year. They're concerned about the local economy. The other things checked, the right behind that, transportation, taxation, regulation and employment, which are always up there as businesses concerned. So that is the results of the, of our survey. You're going to take some time, dig into the numbers. We're happy to get back with you. We're happy for the, the county's support and, uh, we really, really enjoy making great things happen through our local businesses. And, uh, I appreciate the time.
It's very helpful, Glenn. Thank you for the good work, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. Also under number three is a presentation and discussion on replacing Brazos County's VoIP telephone system by the Information Technology Department.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Aaron Caldwell, Chief Information Officer for the county. In two weeks from today, uh, it's my hope that the Purchasing Department will have an item on your agenda, requesting permission to release an RFP, uh, seeking a vendor to replace our telephone system. And so the purpose of this presentation is really just to give the court a quick briefing and let you be thinking about any questions that you might have and over the next two weeks, forward those questions on to us and we'll, we'll field that for you so that when that item lands on your agenda, it'll be smooth sailing with, with any luck. So, uh, quickly a background on our VoIP system. Back in two thousand and eight, uh, RT Department began replacing what used to be an old Noratel PBX telephone system. And we spent three years rolling that, uh, voice over IP solution out countywide. And, um, we have been maintaining that system now for the last seventeen years, fourteen years. In any case, uh, we have had to keep this system under support. But we have gone through multiple different vendors who have helped us support this system. And it is now becoming, uh, very difficult to find support for it. In fact, the current vendor has told us that they will no longer support it after the end of the year. And we are unable to find a, another vendor to replace them. And so we need to do something before the end of the year. We actually began planning on replacing this system, uh, starting about ten years ago. At the time, we were targeting twenty seventeen as the target date to replace it. And so we had forecasted, starting in twenty fifteen, we started forecasting costs to replace the system in twenty seventeen. We revised those, uh, cost estimates in twenty sixteen. When twenty seventeen rolled around, uh, in lieu of actually replacing it, we, uh, conducted a second upgrade to the system, which again partially resolved some of the issues that we were, um, struggling with on our, um, on our VoIP phone system. But we were able to push it out. And so in twenty eighteen, uh, we requested and were granted some dollars in capital with the idea that we would, sorry, with the idea that we would, um, uh, arrange to move to a hosted VoIP solution with an outfit by the name of Synergy. Well, that failed because Synergy, as it turned out, was not on state contract as we had been led to believe. And so we had to backtrack and try it again in FY nineteen. Dollars were rolled forward FY nineteen. And in FY nineteen, we actually did release a request for proposals, but the outcome of that, uh, effort was no award. Many of the responses that we got were, um, incomplete, as was required by the RFP. And then many of the responses that we got were simply beyond the, the dollars that we had, had budgeted and had anticipated spending. So once again, it was delayed. And then for the next four years, um, we continued to push out, um, to, to future years. Uh, of course, twenty twenty one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we, you know, were staring at COVID and, and, um, funding, uh, issues that we had to, had to be concerned about. And so in twenty twenty four, we thought again, we are going to, um, try this one more time. And so we turned in a request for dollars for FY twenty-five. FY twenty-five dollars were granted. And so back in November, we had tried to acquire a hosted VoIP solution from an outfit by the name of Ring Central. Well, that failed, um, in, in large part because their legal team decided they simply were not going to play ball. They would not cooperate with us and so we could not come to an agreement with Ring Central. So once again, we had to backtrack. And so now we are looking at releasing a second request for proposals. And that is what I hope to be on your agenda two weeks from today. There are several different things that we want to accomplish in moving away from our current system. Starting with, we, we want a hosted solution, uh, served by one vendor. Currently, we have to work with three separate vendors on our, on our system. We have to work with the vendor who supports the VoIP software itself. And that is the software that, if you want to think of it as a software that's running on your handset, on your desk. We have to work with that vendor. That is the vendor who is going to go away at the end of the year. We also have to work with the vendor who supports the, um, We also have to work with the vendor who supports the intermediary devices that translates the signals from our handsets to the telephone circuit carrier. And then we have to work with Frontier, the circuit carrier. So there's three different vendors involved. And supporting the system has, it's just gotten complicated. We also want to get out of the business of having to update the backend software. Updating the backend software has proven, over the years, to be extremely complicated. And I won't say that it terrifies us, but we dread it. And we have run into issues in the past trying to upgrade the software. And so we want to go with a vendor who will take care of that backend business for us. We will continue to administer the frontend. We will continue to program the extensions and the lines, and we'll be working with the, setting up the voicemails and that sort of thing. So we're not getting out of it altogether by any means. But we want to get out of the backend support. We also recognize, and have for quite a long time, that our current system lacks a lot of features that we really need, starting with unified communications. So think of unified communication as you get a phone call at your desktop handset in your office. If you're not sitting there, you want that phone call to find you, right? Well, you can forward that call to your cellphone, but maybe you don't have your cellphone with you. Maybe you've got a laptop in front of you and you're sitting there in a conference room over in Austin. You still want to be able to see that that call's coming in, even if you don't have your cellphone with you. You want that call to follow you around. And so what we want is a solution that is going to integrate with Microsoft Teams so that anywhere that you are logged into Microsoft Teams, even at home, on your personal PC, if you're logged into your county account and you're on Teams at home, you will see that call coming into your office, and you'll be able to take it there in your den. We want to improve availability. We want a solution so that in the event of a disaster, if we have to move our operations elsewhere, as long as we've got power and internet service, we will still be able to place outgoing and receive incoming calls. We want better reporting. For the last 17 years, we have had dismal reporting out of the system that we have. We want to be able to break down reports by department, for example, something that we're just not able to do. So those are all the goals. And I'm not sitting here advancing my slideshow for y'all. My apologies. But really, to kind of wrap things up, the next steps then would be, again, it's our hope that you will permit Purchasing to release that RFP in two weeks. The idea being that we will release the RFP. We will start getting responses back. We can be evaluating those responses in July and August with the idea that we will select a vendor and get moved to that new solution before the end of the year. If we do not do this, again, the system that we currently have is aging. We've got phones that are failing. The current vendor who is going to go away at the end of the year does not, will not sell us any additional licensing. If you create additional positions in the upcoming FY26 budget, for example, we will be able to provide phones for six additional employees. We've got six spare licenses that we can roll out. Beyond that, we'll have to start cannibalizing conference room phone licenses and something. We'll have to get very creative. We have had citizen complaints lately because the voicemail system has failed at the most inopportune time. Jury services specifically. If you are a potential juror, you're asked to call in the night before, that Monday morning. And we have had failures in the voice messaging system so that these potential jurors calling in don't get any kind of response at all. And so they just assume they're not required to show up. They don't show up, and that leaves our courts without enough potential jurors for dire. So there's a lot of risks that we are staring at. And really, to kind of summarize, there's operational issues that we need to try to address. We really want to bring in, we want to increase our continuity of operations. We want to bring in unified communications. And it is our recommendation that we proceed with the RFP process and select a replacement.
Eric, I'm all for issuing an RFP, but I'm not interested in spending any more money than we normally spend every year for our communications. And I don't know, if you've talked to other counties to see what their process is, what they're using, but I would appreciate if you would do some checking. Nick has not the time to add a lot of money to the budget.
I agree. And I will tell you that over the years, since 2015, when we first started 10 years ago, when we first started planning on having to replace this thing, the expense to replace this has shifted wildly. You know, from, I mean, I will tell you that 10 years ago, we were predicting $1 million. The following year, we reduced that down to half a million dollars. The following year, we reduced that down to a quarter of a million dollars. At one point, again, we mentioned, I mentioned Synergy, we were looking at Synergy, we were looking at $93,000. I don't think that we're going to get that price. And it really remains to be seen what kind of responses we get through this RFP process. We have been, my staff back here in the corner, they can speak to this in more detail than I can, but we've been talking to our colleagues around the state. And we've actually been doing demos with different vendors, and we've been doing some proof of concepts for the unified communication solution. And so we've got some idea, but until we get these responses back to the RFP process, we really won't know exactly what we're coming up against.
I don't think there's any time that the public is more concerned about the money that we spend, their taxpayer dollars, than they are right now. So we need to be very cognizant of that as we move forward.
I agree.
Thank you.
And I do think that you all are aware of that. But I also recognize that our phone system is in terrible shape because of the difficulty of receiving calls, voicemails, everything that we have. So we have to be able to function, so we need a good functioning system. So somewhere between the absolute need of what the county needs and the cost, hopefully, we can find a middle ground that gives us what we need to serve the county and that we can do it, you know, as feasibly, financially, you know, feasible as possible. But we've got to have a better phone system. I thought it might be me, since I am mature enough to remember the rotary system, and I thought, well, have I slipped that far behind? Because that phone is so difficult to use. So we need something better. And I was kind of surprised how old it is.
Well, again, we were targeting eight years ago as a date to replace this thing. And for the variety of reasons that I've mentioned, it just hasn't happened. But now we are at a point where we really don't have a choice. It's time. It's time.
I'm one of your complainers.
Eric, thank you.
A complainant, I should say, I guess.
Did I mean to cut you off?
No, I'm good. I'm done. Done.
Well, again, I mean, if y'all have questions between now and two weeks from now, feel free to reach out, and I'll do what I can to address the questions or the concerns.
Very good. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 24. Fourth item, approval requested from Human Resources to write off outstanding accounts receivable in the amount of $24.71. This amount is believed to be uncollectible.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number five, approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County FY2425, March 2025 through May 2025, cash contribution of $49,124.83 to the Specialty Court Program.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number six, approval requested to transfer $1,250,000 from Fund 11,000 Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund to Fund 41,000 General Obligation Debt Service Fund for the Certificate of Obligation 2015 and Limited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2017 for fiscal year 2025.
Move approval.
And I'll second that. Discussion?
Yeah, the only question I have is that, if I remember back when I was on city council in College Station, years and years and years and years and years and years ago, there were only a few different things we could use Hotel Motel Occupancy Funds for. Is what we're asking for here, is that okay? Is that?
Yes, sir, and you are correct. My understanding is these funds were linked at the time to the construction of the Expo Center. So that was the project that the funds are used for.
So legally, we're okay doing this?
Good question. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Okay, we have a motion as second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, approval requested from Purchasing Department to declare a list of surplus property as salvage in accordance with Local Government Code 263.152 and authorize destruction or other means of disposal.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, approval requested from Information Technology to combine Capital Improvement Projects 25-113 and 25-227 to move Brazos County away from VMware to Newatonix.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
I just want to know what the cost difference is, if somebody can answer that. I don't know who. Eric, I don't mean to be picking on you. I just need to.
No, sir. That's fine. Need to wrinkle these papers so they're easier to separate. The total cost of ownership over 10 years for VMware, including the replacement of the requisite hardware that it would have to run on, is going to be $2.5 million. That same 10-year cost of ownership for Newtanix, $2 million. So over 10 years, we're going to save half a million.
My hero. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Number nine, reapproval of the following committee for RFPs, CIP 25-593 Old Reliance Road Phase 2, CIP 25-581 Dilly Shaw Tap Road Reconstruction, and CIP 25-580 Feral Creek Road Reconstruction.
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 10, approval of CIP 25-595 for pod window tenting for Brazos County Juvenile Facility with Globe Premier Auto Spa.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, and that's, just so the public knows, this is, Globe Premier Auto Spa is the vendor, but this is for one-way tenting at the Brazos County Juvenile Facility. So in cases for safety of staff and even those there at the facility, sometimes it's necessary that they can not see out, but people can see in, and that's what that is. Okay, we have a motion and a second for item number 10. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Number 11, approval for renewal of Contract 26-001R Portable Toilet Rental with Madol Equipment Rental and Sales for an additional year expiring September 30, 2026.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm looking at this list of locations. You know, it's 75 bucks a month per location, $900 a year. But there's like, okay, I see Brazos County Expo Yard. I thought we had toilets at the Expo Center. So I'm curious why we need one there. And I mean, there's a number of places on here. Why do we need portable toilets on all these different locations?
Charles?
Commissioners, some of those are at Citizen Collection Site. The county contracts with Junction 505. 505, I apologize. That is for them to be able to man that post all day long. Additional ones may be county road and bridge yards so that the employees that come to that location, they have a place to handle their business.
That was delicately put.
I apologize. So that they can do that. And that is at Road and Bridge, but, I mean, that one location is at the Expo Center, but it's not up against the facility. They don't go really by the facility. They go behind it in a stockpile area that they have, they stockpile some materials there.
How often do we go through this list and look at it and say, do we really need it there?
At every renewal, we send it to the department for them to refresh that.
Okay.
So at least every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 12, approval of the final plat of Southern Point Subdivision, Section 718.080 acres, Starett D. Smith League Survey, A-210, City of College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Site is located in Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 13, consider and take action on the Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to Directional Bore Fiber Optic Conduit within the right-of-way of Cliff Road. Project also includes four road bore crossings. Site's located in Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion as second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 14, consider and take action on the Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to construct four road bores under Coleman Street located within Saddle Ridge Subdivision. Site's located in Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 15, consider and take action on Brazos Wi-Fi, oops, sorry, consider and take action on the Frontier Communications Utility Permit to install fiber optic conduit.
Can I go back to 15?
Oh, I was reading right. I apologize. I hit the hashtag to really, forgive me. This is harder than it looks.
Yes, it is.
Consider and take action on the Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to Directional Bore Fiber Optic Conduit within the right-of-way of Opera Steiny Road. Project also includes two road bore crossings. Site's located in Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, number 16. Consider and take action on the Frontier Communications Utility Permit to install fiber optic conduit and construct road bores within the rights and ways of the following county roads in Precinct 2.
Move approval, A through D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 17, consider and take action on the Frontier Communications Utility Permit to install fiber optic conduit and construct road bores within the rights and ways of the following county roads in Precinct 2.
Move approval A through G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 18, second request to approve the final plat of Oak Hills subdivision lots 22R and 23R being a replat of lots 21, 22, and 23, 11.56 acres, Stephen Jones League Survey Abstract Number 27, City of College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Sites located in Precinct Four.
Move approv- move approval.
For discussion, I'll second. Bruce?
So this came up a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, Commissioner Nettles and I, that was the day we were doing the mediation for the litigation we're involved in, and so I wasn't able to be here that day. But the replat process is a function of our subdivision regulations. In this particular instance, the person who filed for the replat has complied with all of the subdivision regulations set forth by the, by Brazos County and meets the requirements for replat, which also in this case included getting the approval of the City of College Station for the replat, which is, you know, compared to us, a lot more difficult. So I know there were some complaints made that day. I've watched the recording of it, and two main issues were concerns about some septic problems, which would be something that would be addressed by the Health Department. It's not a part of our subdivision regulations. And two deed restrictions. And I understand, I understand their concerns, but deed restrictions are put in place, or restrictive covenants may be another word you've heard, are put in place when a subdivision is created, and they're filed of record, they're at the county courthouse, and when you get your title commitment, when you buy your property or your house, they let you know what those are. But those deed restrictions or restricted covenants are personal to the people that own property in that subdivision. They are not enforceable by the county, they're not reviewable by the county. We're not a party to those when they're created. And as a result, if you want to enforce deed restrictions and restriction of covenants, it's up to the entity, usually an HOA, or the individual citizens that have also bought property in there with the same restrictions. Those are the people that have the ability to enforce those restrictions. The county does not. In our subdivision, subdivision regulations, we set forth a process. This gentleman met all of the requirements of our process, and whether there may or may not be violations of deed restrictions is not relevant to the replat process. This is, I understand, an older neighborhood, and so even if there are specific deed restrictions on record, unless that HOA and the people that live in that neighborhood have rigorously enforced those deed restrictions and restrictive covenants over the years, even though they're of record, they may not be enforceable or, or they may become void. We have no way of addressing that. We don't review that. That's, that's an issue for a district court to hear litigation filed by a homeowner or an HOA to stop a process if, if somebody is violating a restriction. But it's, it's not part of our replat process, and it's not appropriate for y'all to consider in deciding whether replat or not. We, we set out a process. The gentleman has met our requirements. I don't believe the county, despite the concerns of the citizens, I don't believe the county has the right to not enforce our subdivision regulations and, and grant this replat.
I feel bad because I led the charge on this, and I, and I gave these homeowners false hope. And I didn't understand the legal ramifications and what, as a county, we were allowed to do. What I would, what I would want to say to these homeowners is, you're, you do have the opportunity as an HOA to go after this property owner, and I was contacted last night by the City of College Station, and they're concerned about, they said there's a number, they think there's a number of people living here full-time. It's supposed to be a recreational resort for RVs, for motor homes, and travel trailers and so forth. And, and the city's concern is that the septic tank is not, their septic system is not doing the adequate job because of, of all the people that are living there now, so.
Well, and this is in the ETJ, so potentially the City of College Station has more ability to wield a hammer over that than, than we do.
Prithana, did you want to add?
Ratna Banerjee, Brazos County Engineer, hi. I wanted to provide one clarification on the septic system. As part of our regulation requirements, the Health Department looks at the replats and every plat that goes through our office and provides confirmation that the plat, the replat as it stands right now is okay, where the septic system that is there today is okay to handle the replat. That is part of this application. What they have added in their approval of the plat is that if any changes are going to be made to the use of the property, they will evaluate the septic requirements at that time when the, when the applicant comes to our office to apply for a floodplain development permit, and then following that will apply for a septic permit. So as it stands today, the replat has been already looked at and been approved by the Health Department, which is actually a requirement for our subdivision regulations.
Thank you, doctor, and I love your East Texas accent.
So multiple steps, and today only deals with the replat. They've satisfied what the county has set forth at this point. We do have speakers that want to comment on this as well.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make time for those. The first speaker is Kathy Vines. Kathy?
I heard the explanation that was made by the county engineer, and I've heard counsel's advice to the court. This is not a rubber stamp situation. It's on the, on the agenda for your vote to approve this. It's, you have the authority to say no. Let the homeowner association, the Architectural Committee, resolve with this landowner before the court approves the replat. It is within your authority. So if you decide to approve this, I would like your explanation on the record of why you think that this serves the community that you, that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would disagree with the speaker. You have subdivision regulations that have clear, concise directions on how to obtain a replat. He has met all of the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
So why do we have a vote?
Ma'am.
Do we have to vote, right? Why, my question still stands.
The second speaker on this item is Russ Cutwall.
Mr. Condala, Mr. Brown, Ms. Watson. My name is Russ Cutwall. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Myself and others previously spoke to this court two weeks ago in opposition to a replat of Lot 23 Oak Hill subdivision. This court disapproved the replat. After more than 29 years of military service, my wife and I decided to return to Brazos County and make this community our home. We own lots 32, 33, and 34, Oak Hill subdivision. I'm a member of the subdivision Architectural Control Committee. Our home is just down the road from Lot 23, which is the subject of today's new request for replat. The Oak Hill subdivision is a rural subdivision with deed restrictions. The previous owner, owners of Lot 23 informed Mr. Wall these deed restrictions prior to his purchase of the home. Mr. Wall is currently requesting to replat and assimilate a portion of his residential property, Lot 23, into his adjacent commercial property and RV park, Lot 21 and 22. This replat is in violation of our subdivision deed restrictions. Included in the record submitted to Brazos County by Mr. Wall for the replat is a title report dated November 26, 2024. This report states that covenants, conditions, and restrictions are recorded in volumes 200, 1381, 1385, 1407, 1414, 7900, and 16342 in the official records of Brazos County. In other words, Brazos County maintains an official copy of all Oak Hill subdivision deed restrictions from 1959 to 2024. And Mr. Wall's title report identified and hyperlinked all of these deed restrictions. In accordance with our deed restrictions, no lot shall be subdivided, replanted, or amended so as to create a new or additional lot or tract based on the configuration used or ownership. If an owner decides to realign the configuration of a lot, written approval must be obtained from the Oak Hill subdivision Architectural Control Committee. Mr. Wall has not requested a replat through the subdivision. Certified letters were sent and received by Mr. Wall. These letters requested a written response as to his intent. Mr. Wall has yet to respond in writing. However, yesterday evening at 6:30 PM, Mr. Wall met in person with the Oak Hills Architectural Control Committee at the Community Fire Station, Precinct Four, where he stated, one, he had read all the deed restrictions. Two, he would not move forward with either physical or paper changes to the nature of his property at this time. And three, he would provide details in writing within a week as to the intent for Lot 23. Thus, this replat request today is in contrast to our conversation yesterday. Also discussed with Mr. Wall was neighborhood complaints about the septic system in his RV park being overloaded and affecting adjacent residential lots. Mr. Wall stated that this was no longer an issue. However, we do not know whether this issue has been investigated and resolved by the County Health Department. As the court makes its decision, please note that in accordance with the Brazos County plat application form, your form, quote, it says, "The owner acknowledges that submission of an application does not in any way obligate the county to prove the application, that although county staff," which I assume is the county engineer and the county general counsel, "may make certain recommendations regarding this application, the Commissioners Court may not follow that recommendation and may make a final decision that does not conform to the staff's recommendations." Thus, our elected county officials are able to make informed decisions that are in the best interest of the residents and communities of Brazos County. Respectfully, I request that the Brazos County Commissioners Court not approve this replat, or at a minimum, table this issue pending additional investigation into the deed restrictions in the RV park septic system. On behalf of the residents of Oak Hills, I thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this issue.
Thank you.
Next speaker on this is Mike Sutherland.
Howdy, thank you, Commissioners. I think what we have here is a failure to communicate. The staff's not communicating with you, and you aren't communicating with the citizens. You're required by law to show us how you make decisions and discuss it up here on the dice. This should not even be on the agenda. It does not conform to your own rules. You have a form that the applicant has to fill out, and it says what Russ just said, that you make your own decision outside the staff, which means that you don't have to listen to the recommendation. That's not a demand. That's not a directive. That's a recommendation, and you don't have to follow it. Number two, on the form that the applicant has to fill out, it doesn't show that he's paid his fee. Number three, on this application that, that you decided, that you put out, it shows that the receipt by the Brazos County, there's no receipt signature. It hadn't been received. Not only that, but there's a checklist here of things that have to be done. We talked about, somebody mentioned the sewer. Well, it says that, at the bottom of that form, it says, "It is understood that the application is not finished or dated until all documents listed above are filed at the Brazos County Engineering Office, and all applicable blanks are filled in by the applicant." Okay? And so one of them is a list of letter, they did put the plat on there, and they put this form on, on the agenda, but what they failed to put on here is the final letters of approval. Number one, letter from the Brazos County Health District for on-site sewage evaluation. Not the county engineer, not the attorney, the Health Department. You don't have that. A letter from the Brazos County 911 organization for the road names. You don't have that. A letter from the Water District or company stating water availability. You don't have that. And right now, though you know that you're in a lawsuit against the groundwater district because there's a shortage of water. So you don't know if they can put a swimming pool, you don't know what they're going to do there. You don't know what the water availability or demand is. And the last thing on this list is approval notification from the appropriate city. So you don't have that. And Commissioner Brown just said that College Station didn't like it. So you don't have that approval. So y'all don't have any documentation required by your own rules to move this forward. Okay, and the second part of that is, on your agenda item, this is poor staff work. I don't know, y'all told them to do it, but it's very poor because you ask a question about is it legal or not? That ought to be on the form. As a matter of fact, it doesn't state that, nobody states in writing this is a legal operation to do this. And there's no staff recommendation like the form requires, so you don't know what the details are that the staff used to make this recommendation. It's not even recommended to you for approval. There's nothing on here that says that. The department, the department requesting the item is the road and bridge. The department impacted by the agenda item is road bridge is not impacted by that item. The citizens are impacted by the item. Y'all don't have any of that detail. The brief explanation of the agenda item, whether it's not, whether the budget or not, well, of course, it's not. However, number four, the consequences of failing to approve this agenda item, that's not on here. Isn't that important to you? Don't you need to know who's against it, who is for it, and what the reasons are? You don't have that. And the deadline for approval is June 16th. What does that mean? Why is that there? There's no explanation. You guys, pardon me, the Commissioners, you do not have the information you need to make a decision on this. You should postpone this until everybody does their work and complies with the law, and not only the law, but your own rules. They don't even comply with your own rules. And then the last thing is number six, which I don't understand why it's there. It says, "The site work, the site work is in Precinct Four." That doesn't matter. Y'all all got a vote on it, and you need to load the location. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandra Baxter.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Sandra Baxter, and I'm a resident of Brazos County, Precinct Four, a member of the Oak Hill subdivision Architectural Control Committee, and a property owner at 9121 Lightsea Lane, Lot 24, and the life trust owner of 9159 Lightsea Lane, Lot 25. The property is adjacent to Lot 23. That is the subject of today's second request for replat. On June 3rd, this court took action to deny approval for agenda item 15, which was listed as a request for approval for the final plat of Oak Hill subdivision lots 22R and 23R being a replat of lots 21, 22, and 23, 11.56 acres, Stephen Jones League Survey, Abstract Number 27, City of College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Site located in Precinct Four. Today, a replat application is once again before you, in which J.C. Wall, the property owner of lots 21, 22, and 23, is seeking to replat these lots, to assimilate a portion of the residential Lot 23 into his commercial lots, supporting the RV park operation there. To begin, I'd like to point out that a review of the plat application clearly indicates that the Commissioners Court is not obligated to make a decision that approves the application, even if the application has satisfied the submission requirements that place it on the Commissioners Court action item agenda. Yesterday, in a brief meeting where the Architectural Control Committee met with Mr. Wall, I learned of a potential plan for his replatted area of Lot 23 to be used for the construction of storage facilities to support the residence of the 12-man RV park. Yes, I said residence. Storage facilities onsite would support the use of this RV park to provide housing for long-term tenants, I, you know, greater than 30 days rental. Changing the park's classification from a facility support tourism by providing weekend housing to traveling guests for events such as Aggie Game Days, to a facility offering affordable housing for people who need a place to live. Why would it be of concern to me if the 80 slots are filled with residents? It would be a concern because I question the capacity of the septic system to support the daily living of 80 residential households. 80 households in this park is more than the number of households living in all of the homes within the Oak Hill subdivision. And each of these homes in the subdivision have their own septic system for each individual house. When the park was constructed, the previous owners of Lot 23- When the park was constructed, the previous owners of Lot 23 and I had frequent discussions about the problems with the septic system at the RV park. My husband and I initiated communication with both Mr. Wall and the Brazos County Health Department on a number of occasions following incidents in which the RV park septic system spilled onto our property. This was usually associated with game day weekends when the park was full. I do not yet know what the requirements are for a septic system that supports 80 residential households, but I believe it would not be the same as a septic system to support 80 weekend RV travelers. This being said, I come before this meeting of the Brazos County Commissioner's Court to request that the court adhere to its decision made on June 3rd to announce again, to once again deny approval of the application to replat Lot 23 to prevent its assimilation with lots 21 and 22, or at the very least, to table the decision until further evaluation of the RV park septic system can be conducted to identify if it can support 80 residents versus 80 tourist trailers. Your consideration is appreciated.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Do you have a question, Commissioner?
Question, Prathana. Regarding the checklist, it's on another page, you know, you check that digital file submission. So you have those documents that he's talking about? You just didn't check it on this form?
Yeah, it's the applicant who is supposed to check it, but we have all the documentation that's required for this replat to be considered for approval, or however you decide it. But everything that was pointed out has been received by our applicant, by our office. If we do not receive, any of the documentation is outstanding, we do not, you know, approve it to be, you know, for recommendation by the court for how you want to decide on it. But every item on the application has been received.
It's just not checked off for person?
Yes, we have.
And because the previous application was denied, we did require him to pay the application fee on this application because it's separate and apart from the last one.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Sharp Aparicio.
My name is Elizabeth Sharp Aparicio, and I object to and ask that the court reject or at least table the current request to approve the final replat of the Oak Hills subdivision lots 21, 22, 23, to 22R and 23R. Mr. Wall owns lots 21 and 22 in the Oak Hills subdivision. Both plats are zone commercial according to all versions of the Oak Hills restriction. That is 1959, 2007, 2010, and 2020. Mr. Wall has recently purchased Lot 23, a residential lot in the same subdivision, and is requesting to replat this property from three lots to two lots. Replanting of two different types of lots, commercial and residential, is not allowed according to the 1959 Oak Hills covenants and subsequent amendments of 2007, 2010, and 2020. The most recent 2020 amendment state, Article 1.02, no lot shall be subdivided, replaced, or amended so as to create a new or additional lot or trap based on the configuration, use or ownership. Article 1.03, if an owner desires to realign the configuration of the lot, written approval must be obtained by the Architectural Control Committee. We never, I am part of the Architectural Control Committee, and we never received any such request. Article 1.04, lots may be conveyed only in whole and not parts. I am requesting that you reject Mr. Wall's final plat request that clearly violates Oak Hills declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Furthermore, I would strictly request, I respectfully request, a temporary injunction on this replat until the proper performance of the septic system that serves lots 21 and 22, that is, the 12th Park RV Resort, can be verified by the Brazos County Health Department. It is this, if this replat is approved, the ultimate expansion of this RV park could include more parking area for more RVs and for a longer period of time. Past history of this mobile park has included a less than adequate septic system that results in raw sewage from the 12th Park RV Resort flooding adjacent lots in the Oak Hills subdivision. I am respectfully requesting that you reject Mr. Wall's final replat, request, Mr. Wall's replat request that clearly violates not only our Oak Hills declaration of covenants and restrictions, but also temporary, or at least put in a temporary injunction on this replat due to the possible health concerns. These restrictions are necessary to sustain a healthy, family-friendly neighborhood throughout the Oak Hills subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the last speaker?
Do we have one more?
Just going to respond. So you don't have the authority to do temporary injunctions? That would be something that the HOA and/or any of the individual landowners could obtain from a district judge at the courthouse if the appropriate paperwork was filed, but we don't have the authority to issue temporary injunctions in this proceeding.
Okay. I don't know whether I should wait till after the next speaker, but a question for either you or Prathana. So the citizens are saying that he's going to convert it to commercial, but his application says residential. Nowhere in here does it say that he's going to convert it to a commercial property, i.e. an RV park. So if we're going by the application, he's only requesting to replat it, and it states that the application purpose is for residential. The additional information that it may become commercial, i.e. an RV park, is not stated per the request of the application.
Right. So for, one thing that we have to recall for the replating process or the plating process, it is not related to a project being commercial or residential.
A future project.
Yeah. The plat that we are put forth, we have put forth today is basically moving a lot line, changing the lot line configuration. And so that is irrelevant to what the ultimate project that he's planning or not planning, we are not aware of that at this point. The project today is for changing the configuration, the lot line configuration, and it could be for a residential project, it could be for a commercial project. The requirements for meeting the subdivision requirements for a replat application to be considered complete are identical and have nothing to do with the type of project that is, you know, ultimately.
Future project.
Future project. And when, just, I'm taking a step further, I, like I said, I don't know what he has planned because he has not communicated to our office. What will ultimately happen is that he has to come to our office to obtain a floodplain development permit. And when he tries to obtain that permit, that is when the significance of it being a residential, or a commercial, or a manufactured home, or whatever the type of project is, is important, because our fee structure and the review processes for a floodplain development project is, is specific to the type of project. And when he, you know, depending on what he is trying to do, that's when we get into the detail of if it's a residential project, or a commercial project, or a manufactured home, and there are specific requirements, review requirements for that. And then, once he tries to obtain our permit, is when he will ultimately get a septic permit for his planned future project. At this point, the health department, like I said before, has looked at this replat, which is changing the lot line configuration, and has said that the septic that exists today is okay. And I have a letter from their office, that's a requirement of our subdivision regulation to get an approval from the health department, from the 911 addressing office, from the utility providers, from the City of College Station, which is the ETJ in this instance. We have to have those requirements met. Otherwise, your application is considered incomplete and will not be added to the court agenda for consideration of approval or denial. So the applicant has to meet all the requirements, and our office does all the checking, including the fee payment. Everything has to be met, and that's why I have the job to do that for the court. I am responsible to make sure that the applicant meets our requirements, and then, once all the requirements have been met, we add that agenda item to the court for consideration.
Thank you.
It was stated earlier that there's going to be storage units built on this property. Doesn't that render it being a commercial entity?
Like I said, right now, the application that you have in front of you is for a replat. I don't know if that's his ultimate plan with a piece of property, that well, might be, but for that, he has to make another application with our office. He has to fill out another form, and then we go through a review process for that. The health department will review it again. When he, you know, makes it whatever, a storage unit in this case, then that's, that's a separate review process, it's a separate form process, it's a separate fee process. All of that is unrelated to what we are considering today. It's not related right now.
Does the city be involved in that process?
The City of College Station, not really, because this is going to be, they are involved in the plating process, like they are in what the agenda item is today. The next step, the city will not be involved in it anymore, because the floodplain development permit is a county process. He doesn't, since, he's in the ETJ, but he is not anymore subdividing the, you know, the lot anymore after this. If he's changing, using, I mean, making the lot to whatever his uses, at that point, the city does not get involved in those, that, that piece of the project.
Doesn't the city have, have the ability to say, okay, if we're going to approve this, we want you to put in a green belt between the residence property and the property that's got?
No, no. The city's ordinances are not that far-reaching in the ETJ. They cannot force people to add green spaces, and they haven't. It does not reach, that's not one of their requirements in their ordinance.
They can, they can do it if it's in the city limits, but this is ETJ.
If it's in the city limits, yeah, in the ETJ, they do not.
Okay, thank you.
We have another speaker.
It's up to you.
Yep, sure, Mike.
The problem is, you make the decision, you can consider what you want to consider. These people's testimony? You don't let these guys make the decision. By law, you have to make the decision. They can give you their opinion, but that's not a ruling. You're the ruling factor. And these, why is it on this form that the City of College Station has to approve this before you consider it? I mean, they say what they're, they say the thing is done, but you don't have any proof of it. So later on, they're going to say, well, I didn't really mean that, that, you misunderstood me. This is about details, this is about facts, this is about paperwork. You don't have that.
We have another speaker, and that is Lisa Holland for Hazel.
I still have concerns about this. I didn't realize the court met again so soon. I've reached out to HOA council and local council, because I, representing my mother's interests in her property, will definitely be filing something, if for no other reason but to get this homeowner to mediation, since he's ignoring the deed restrictions provided process for requesting this type of change within the contract. And I understand how it complies with the county subdivision ordinances. I'm not sure it still complies with the RV licensing ordinances set up by the county, and I don't see any space on the form for that or a relicensing application. He's numbered the change in the lot as 22, the little piece he wants to add to his commercial, because under the deed restrictions, lots 21 and 22 are deemed commercial for purposes of our deed restriction contract. So it's kind of an in-run around, you know, later having to worry about whether it's commercial or residential for whatever purposes he wants to pursue. I mean, then he can come back to the county and go, no, no, it's all, it's all commercial now. So he obviously knows our deed restrictions are out there. He is making an attempt to tailor his request to avoid as much of our deed restrictions as he can. And I understand how this is a private agreement between the homeowners and, and these commercial lots, which in 1959, they saw the desirability of setting up corner lots on the only two major ingress and egress in the neighborhood as commercial properties. But, and through the 66 years we've been in existence, we have been active, or as active as a community needs to be when people hold on to the property for all 66 years. So we have protected the lots, we've allowed divisions, as in ACC. It's not an unreasonable community at all. We can, I can see the, the value in what he wants to do, but I want him to follow the process. Because once you, once you approve this, he has already breached the agreement by not bringing it to us. He's requesting actions that will breach our deed restrictions. He cannot complete that requested breach unless you approve his request. So although, although the county attorneys will argue that you are not a party to this agreement, you certainly can tortuously interfere with it. And going forward, you know, I haven't done, haven't had time to do the legal research. My council's been on vacation, haven't even had time to spell all this out to, to see what kind of claims we may have. But I know if you approve this today, you move the lines. And in 1959, our deed restrictions really only covered two things. You know, don't chop up the lots, and 80% masonry on all residences. They're, they're not very restrictive. But if you move this line, everybody else can come in and buy any lot they want, which, which they are doing. The development is coming this way. That's why I, I will be following, filing some sort of suit, because this is our last chance. You buy these lots, if you move this line, anybody can move any lot line in the subdivision, because it complies with your subdivision regulations. So we've, we've got to protect our contract now, or we'll lose the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do y'all have any further discussion?
Commissioner, if I may. This is a court. You need to behave as if you're in a court, and we've said this before, we'll say it again, but applause is not appropriate for a court, so please restrain from applause.
Are you, have you signed up to be a speaker? Sorry, no. We had, yeah, we're rules of the court, that we've got to have speakers signed up ahead of time. Okay. We have six speakers, we have a motion and a second. Y'all want to discuss motion, second, any other further discussions, tabling, anything like that?
I'm still going to vote against it, just like I did the first time. So I don't know what everybody else is going to do, but I'm still totally opposed to it.
And Bruce, with, just, I want to make sure I'm, there's a lot of information.
Yes, sir.
Ultimately, the request was to move lines. The, the regulations have been met. However, the, and the, and the court can't get involved with the, the HOA and the-
And the litigation.
Litigation. But, but ultimately, moving the line today doesn't, there's, there's still multiple steps ahead of that, which is the floodplain application, and any other use may incur other applications as well.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
So, because any other application would be if he chooses to formalize the information that they're providing now. If he formalizes it, it has to come back on a different kind of application that says it's now going commercial, and then it would require different kinds of checklist in terms of floodplain, sewage, health department, et cetera, et cetera, and that is not a part of today's decision.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just moving the line, and he's met that requirement.
Prathana.
One other thing that you have to remember, that the next time he comes up with a floodplain development permit for the use, when he specifies the use of the-
development permit for the use, when he specifies the use of the lot, that typically does not make it on the commissioner's court agenda unless it falls under the manufactured home regulation requirements of the county. And in that case, it'll make it to the agenda to approve an infrastructure development plan. But so if it's some other type of project that does not fall under the requirements of a manufactured home or RV park or one of the requirements that need to be met under that regulation, that specific floodplain development plan application will not make it to the court agenda. It's done at staff level. We do it at our... We process those in our office. So just so that you know when you're, you know, making your decision.
Was that one of the speakers, your previous speaker? Yes, ma'am.
How much time would you like me to monitor on this speaker?
Two minutes, that's great. Two minutes is fine.
My comment at this point would be to look at the replat. What the... By moving the line, what we're doing is enlarging the lots that are currently called commercial by enveloping the lot that is currently residential. So it's not a matter of moving the line just like it's willy-nilly. It is changing and expanding so from now on, that expanded part would become part of the commercial and no longer be part of residential property. So that's... We're changing the use and the nature by allowing the line to be moved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, my name is Sandra Baxter. Thank you.
Call the question.
Sure.
I've already made a motion.
Motion is second. Do you want to... You said you wanted to call the question and go ahead and vote? Is that what you're saying? Okay, call the question. I would like to motion to postpone it because there's several questions brought up. One of the things Mr. Cutwall said was that the applicant was meeting with the residents and saying that he could bring some things forward to them before going forward with this request, but it was already on the agenda as of Friday for today. So it sounds like the parties could potentially talk to each other and work something out, bring it back to the court. If I heard that correctly, that's what it sounded like was going on. But because this was already put on the agenda Friday for 72-hour notice, here we are. And so we're having to decide a yes or no where there could potentially be talk between the residents and this applicant.
You would not be prohibited from tabling this.
Sorry?
You would not be prohibited from tabling this.
Right. And so that's what I would like to do is perhaps table it and let them see what they can work out and before it comes back.
You need to... So I need Commissioner Watson to withdraw her motion and you to withdraw your second. And then you could have a motion to table it.
Just saying I withdraw my motion to approve.
Okay, and I withdraw my second and I motion to table this.
Not second.
And let the parties speak among themselves and...
Need to vote.
All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion is tabled. So, item number 19, tax refund applications for the following. A is Randall Roberts, $4,032.72, payment in error. B is CoreLogic, $183.91 overpayment.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Number 20, budget amendments, FY 24-25 budget amendments, 35.01-35.02.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. 21, personnel change of status.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion is approved. 22, payment of claims, approval of payment of claims. A is 821-0221-821-0333 and B is 920-4729-920-4795.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. We'll skip down from 23 to item 25, acknowledgement of the FY 2024 budget to actuals by fund as of June 11, 2025. Acknowledgement of the FY 2024 to 2025 contingency budget to actuals by fund as of June 11, 2025. Juvenile directors' report on inmate population. Lynn is not here today, so I'll cover that. There are 27 juveniles in detention, 21 males, 6 females, and 30 youth on electronic monitors. 27 sheriffs' report on inmate population. Sheriff?
Good morning, commissioners. 735 this morning, 644 men, 91 women, and 49 on monitors.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Okay. I have one and I'll read this. You've likely noticed Judge Peters has not been in court recently. He's dealing with some health issues, but we do anticipate he'll be back with us in the coming weeks. In the meantime, we ask for your prayers and respect for the judge and his family's privacy. All right, we went back up to number 23.
And I'd like to add that when the judge comes back, I want to ask again that we have an open workshop with the public on the issue.
I've got another curve for you. On the executive sessions, item number B has been resolved, so that's no longer an issue. And then we are asking you to pass on item C, as in Charlie. We'll bring that up at a later date. It's not ready today.
Okay. Then 23, convening to executive session pursuant to the following. A, Texas government code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of county personnel. And for that, we'll need Ed, Aubrey, Allison, Bruce, Rayanna, and Nathan Wood. And then D is Texas government code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated, contract B. And for that, we'll need Ed, Allison, Bruce, Aubrey. Chief Martinez, Lieutenant House, Nina, Charles, Trevor.
We need a bigger room. On that item, Chairman, I have submitted my letter with my opinion that debating this issue in open forum would be detrimental to the ability of the county to negotiate and that letter has been filed with the court. I need you to unanimously approve going into executive session on that particular item.
Do you have a motion?
I'm move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. All right, with that in mind, we'll head over to executive. Oh, sorry, the time is 11:51.
We're coming out of executive session, the time is 12:37 and I have a motion, a motion to allow an exception to the current rehire policy to allow an employee to be hired after one full month of separation.
So move.
Second?
All right, we got a motion second in a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. We are going to now motion to adjourn, anyone?
Move, so move.